It's been gotten, it's gotten great reviews.
Exactly.
Uh yeah, no, we're not doing that.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roll call please, Mrs. Damon.
Mrs. Wheeler. Dr. Wagley.
Here.
Mr. Smith. Mrs. Conkle.
Here.
Mr. Canwisheer.
Here.
Mr. Ayers.
Here.
Mrs. Brockman.
Here.
Please rise and join me for the part of the.
I would pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I'll take a motion.
I want the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wagley, that the agenda is approved as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement. It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything, not for some students, but for every student. Welcome to our guests this evening. Uh if you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Do you have anyone? Alright. I will move on to, uh, board members and others. I'll start with, uh, Leanne, Mrs. Lynn, anything tonight? Alright. And Mrs. Kenyon, anything?
Not tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mrs. Bruskin.
I do have two items. And they will be quick. I first wanted to send a congratulations to PV High School teacher Jason Leanda, who received the Regional Computer Science Teaching Excellence Award and was named a finalist for the National Award. This competitive award, which is sponsored by the Computer Science Teachers Association, honors educators who deliver rigorous, inclusive computer science instruction and inspire students to pursue careers in the field. Jason's work is highly regarded by industry professionals and educators across the state. PV is lucky to have him. So congratulations, Mr. Leanda. And then, um, you might recall about this time last year, we had, um, Steph Rieschess, who's a PV High School foreign language teacher here to talk a little bit about the Seal of Bilinguality. So tonight's update is about, um, is about our students who recently, um, completed that. We had sixty-two seniors who graduated with the Seal of Bilinguality this past year, um, which represented four languages. Among those students, nineteen earned the Functional Global Seal, two earned the Working Global Seal, and then two others earned dual seals in two languages. Um, and if you're, can't remember from last year, there are actually three levels to the seal. Um, the lowest being Functional, middle being the Working Fluency, and then the Professional Fluency, which is usually reserved, um, for those native speakers. Additionally, forty-nine juniors have already earned their seal, representing five languages, including Chinese and Hebrew. And this accomplishment reflects years of dedication by our students and the ongoing commitment of our world language team. So congratulations to all.
That's great. Thank you. Excellent news. Moving on, Mrs. Damon, did you have anything? Mr. Struth.
I do have four things tonight. The first one, on our last board meeting consent agenda, I forgot to mention that Jody Bazell will be retiring at the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. So at the end of next year, after twenty-five years in Pleasant Valley, she teaches second grade at Hopewell Elementary, but she also was at Pleasant View prior to going to Hopewell when we opened Hopewell twelve years ago, I believe it was. So very excited for Jody. Along with that, in tonight's consent agenda, I have to say that Kelly Hatler will also be retiring at the, uh, in the middle of next school year, in January of twenty-twenty-six. And she has been with the Pleasant Valley School District for twenty-nine, going on thirty years in our central office situation here. So in her letter, she thanked Dr., uh, Barber for convincing her to come out of being a stay-at-home mom and working with us for the past thirty years. So let's read her letter. Um, also tonight, I wanna, in your consent agenda, over here to my left is our new Director of Technology, Joe Price. Joe will be replacing Kevin, so we're very excited to have him on staff and looking at filling, uh, his position here and maybe a little restructuring we're looking at coming up. So congratulations to Joe on that position. And then finally, um, we had a bus inspection last week. You might be, why am I bringing up a bus inspection? Well, our bus inspection last week, for the first time, we only had two buses that were flagged by the company, right, by the people who do the inspection. One was for a muffler that was loose, which was fixed already, and the second one was for a flywheel on a special ed bus, which the part is ordered and will be fixed. We had five buses out on trips that day, so they'll come back and do it. But if you remember back in the fall of twenty-nineteen, which might be almost as bad as the pandemic when that hit us, but in the fall of two thousand nineteen, we were called at one o'clock that day and were told that we had approximately twenty buses that were gonna be pulled off our lot that day. So in the last five years to go from where we were to where we are today to have two buses, the inspector actually called me and said that Durham is kinda like their poster child now for bus service. So I was like, that's pretty darn good. So very pleased for the work that they're doing over there with our buses. Um, that goes to Kevin and also Pete are the two that work on our bus mechanics over there, and then Stacy for overseeing the program. So again, just from a bus inspection, that is a big deal, only two buses and the things that we had, that's minimal. So very pleased.
Thank you. Moving on to board members, Director Ayers, did you have anything that you need?
I have nothing, thank you.
Director Conkle?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Alright. And we have a small crowd. Director Canwisheer?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Okay. Director Wagley?
Um, I just wanted to thank, um, State Senator Mike Zimmer. He has been holding town, sort of recap of the legislative sessions throughout his whole territory. So I went to the one last Tuesday along with Deb Damon, um, and McCoslin, and it was very informative, uh, on the different legislative bills that were discussed. Of course, we did advocate for public education as well, and it was really great to have a, um, state senator in our area, um, who knows so much about public school, um, issues and, um, being an ear for advocacy.
Thank you. Alright, and moving on to the consent agenda, uh, which includes meeting, uh, minute meeting, meeting minutes, uh, open enrollment and personnel. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If there are no questions, I will take a motion.
I want the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Can- Canwisheer to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
I agree.
Any opposed? Alright. We'll move on to approval of bills, and I will start with general fund.
I move the general fund warrants be issued in a total amount of a hundred and forty-six thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Ayers, that general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition Fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of ten thousand, six hundred and sixty-eight dollars and ninety-seven cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Conkle, that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Elementary Junior High Activity Fund.
I move that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-six, ninety-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Kenyon, second by Director Wagley, that elementary junior high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? High School Activity Fund.
I move that the high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-six cents in payment of invoices presented.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Wagley, that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Management Fund.
I move that the management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two dollars in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Canwisheer, that management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Capital Projects Fund.
I move the capital project funds warrants be issued in a total amount of two million, eight hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars and nine cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Canwisheer, second by Director Ayers, that capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions?
Deeper voice, Catherine, though. Or just a lower voice.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, Physical Plant and Equipment Levy Fund.
I move the capital fund warrants be issued in a total amount of fourteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and forty cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Canwisheer, that capital fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Debt Service Fund.
I move that the debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of four million, six hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars and twenty-five cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Wagley, second by Director Canwisheer, that debt service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Internal Service Fund.
I move the internal service fund warrants sixty-six fifty-three to sixty-six. And ACH thirty-two ninety-one, is yeah, is that correct?
I'll let you know. I think it is.
That means it's just one.
Yeah.
ACH thirty-two ninety-one through thirty-two ninety-three be issued in the total amount of two hundred and five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Conkle, second by Director Wagley, that internal service fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And Trust Fund.
I move the trust fund warrant be issued in the total amount of twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-one cents in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Director Ayers, second by Director Conkle, that trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, can I go back to one of the, I just have a question on one thing, um, that I forgot to ask. Um, when we did the, uh, management fund, there is, it says high school builders risk insurance, forty-three thousand dollars. So is that insurance that we are getting because of the construction that's going on? And if so, isn't that covered by Bruce Builders, or do we have to carry insurance for them?
We carry it for them.
Say it again?
We carry that for them.
We've done that with all of our construction projects, where we carry the insurance?
Yep. It's just to cover everything that's on the, our grounds in the construction process.
Okay.
If there's any theft or vandalism.
Oh, okay.
And the internal service one we had was simply the Delta Dental Claims for the month. That's all that was, that six, one we had, so.
Was just one?
Yes, correct.
Alright. Alright, we will move on to old business, and I will pass this on to Leanne on board policy.
Yeah, so I'll try to get through this as quickly as I can. Um, so since our last board meeting, um, there have been additional changes to our Board Policy Series one oh four. Um, we had our primer come out in March, which was the early legislation, and then the final came out in June, and there was a significant change in this. Um, and this was due to House File eight sixty-five, uh, striking language in, uh, the legislation that took out, which is based on actual or perceived trait or characteristic of the student. So when you look at the updates, you will see that majority of the language that was in there has been taken out and in our forms, it has been significantly reduced so that it removes any of those things that would applied under that language. Um, and this section one oh four is our anti-bullying, anti-harassment, um, board policy and complaint forms. So that will have to go through again, um, through the next board meeting since there was significant changes to it. Other than that, the one hundred series is staying the same as it was previously. Within the two hundred series, um, we have a total of fifty-one policies, ten new, eleven revised, thirty that are just for review, and one that no longer is, um, advised through IASB. So I'm gonna just give a high overview of the revisions that we have, because majority of it is IASB now coming back and splitting previous board policies into two separate ones. Um, so when we look at revisions, um, two hundred point oh one R one, simple language change. Um, and two oh three is going to be, language that was removed in that policy is now being added to our new board policy four oh one oh three, which is nepotism. So it's not being struck completely, it's just being moved to a different policy. Um, and then when we go to two oh six oh three and two oh nine oh three, these are simple language changes, so just striking of words here and there, but nothing massive. Two oh nine oh six is old board policy split, so they removed, um, language and is now in two oh nine oh four, which is suspension of policy. And then two ten oh two and oh four were previously board policy two oh five point one, that they've just split into two separate ones, regular meetings and work sessions. Uh, two ten oh five, again, just simple language change. Two twelve and two twelve oh one, again, they just split our one policy into two. And then two fifteen, uh, they split our policy and added additional. So that is why you will see up top, two fifteen E one, which is now our exhibit, is considered a new policy because of the amount of additional language that was added in the policy. This just gives you that high-level overview when you guys are going through of what the, what the changes were and why they happened.
I have a question on two oh six oh three. Um, the, the way this is worded for the secretary suggests she has a lot more responsibilities than we actually assign in this school district, and I'll give you an example. She's responsible to keep an accurate record of school, of school funds, but I'm, my view is that's Mike's role, that's not the secretary's role.
Yes, it is his, but I mean, overall, they would just kinda be overarching of that, and like when we do bills and things like that. Like that's, that's the only reason why I believe it's in there, but she, I mean, yeah, in this case, Debbie's not overseeing them. Now, some districts also I know have, their CFO could also be their board secretary at times, so that happens as well.
I, I find, um, Doug, that a lot of the board policy language that is wrote is written for districts that don't have a CFO, they don't have a director of HR, and their board secretary really does have a lot, a scope of responsibility. Um, but I went through these, um, not only with Brian, but with Mike. And this one, we didn't think that we needed to change the language, because when we get into other board policies, it really starts defining a lot more things. So this is just like an arching overview, like Brian said. However, if you guys are not comfortable with that language, we absolutely can change or modify. This is what IASB recommends as a model policy, but it, we have the right to edit and add.
I would, I would prefer some sort of language in there or designated person as defined by the, the board secretary. Because even the second thing, and it's funny, the Collins here tonight, you know, collect data on truancy, really, is Deb really doing that? I doubt it.
I, it's kinda like, um, records per se, like our.
Sort of a.
Student record.
Right, of the information.
Correct.
And, and that's fine, but I think that the text needs to read that and doesn't read that way.
Or maybe if you wanna get into store data on truancy or something like that, rather than collect, cause this is indicating that he's actually doing the, the investigating on the truancy.
Yeah.
I mean, the start of the paragraph, I think defines it nicely, it just says, "to preserve and maintain the records", which to me makes sense, but the problem is later down, the thing, it actually gives action verbs that she's doing and that just doesn't work.
Let us revisit that, we'll come back with some new verbiage on that one. So we'll bring two oh six point oh three back.
And Doug, I'll also, uh, prior to changing the language, I'll look to see what the legal references are from IASB as to why they added this verbiage in here, to see if there is a reason. And if so, if within the policy, we need to identify who is responsible for those, that we're not taking out anything that legally were required, but we can modify the language to make sure that we're in compliance.
Any other questions on, uh, updates or changes?
The striking of that section that talks about gender, age, et cetera.
The one hundred series?
Yeah. What's the palpable impact of that to us?
So when you look at the forms that are in there, I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah.
We still have to go through and identify, you write a more of a narrative versus checking those boxes to why. So I think it just comes up in our narrative versus checking the boxes, is it, was it sexual, was it ethnic, and what was the root for it, race, whatever.
So they've, they've taken out the language, which under Title VII is protected classes. And instead of identifying a characteristic or anything, they are looking more for a summary or to bring point, a narrative of. Um, and that follows along with the House File eight sixty-five, which is taking that language out as part of the anti-bullying and anti-harassment policy. So we no longer use perceived or real characteristics or traits, so that, that language is no longer in there.
Are we keeping reporting on that today?
On the what?
Are we keeping reporting on that today? How many of each of these steps we actually see, will we therefore lose that visibility?
Um, that'd be a great question to ask when we do our report, and they can talk about the five or so that we had filed at the high school this year, we can bring that back up. And the conversation that we're having, just to keep your mind, would be when we have a case that is bullying and harassment founded case, for example, and you might check the box, was it because of age, disability, familial status, all those things? Um, how does that impact our investigation? That'd be something to think about there when we get to that point. Yeah.
I'm just thinking, right, I mean, paragraphs are not searchable, they don't provide for metrics, right? You can't use it for anything except for that specific case, and then it becomes history after that.
My assumption will be before, we also have, at the end of the year, if we have a founded case, we have to report that to the, um, Department of Education. And in that form, it usually would ask, what's the reason for it? So it'd be interesting to see how they change that as well when we get to that point.
And mind you, this only applies to the bullying and harassment, it does not apply to the Title IX, which is discrimination based on sex. All of those things still are relevant in that space, they aren't in this space, so.
So I would add, in your summative, we would just be approving tonight, the one hundred and two hundred series, that are the revised ones. There are some that, there are eight, now nine that we will bring back in the first board meeting in July, which is the revised one oh four, the bullying and harassment, we'll bring that one back, cause of the changes. And then the, uh, nine that you would see listed there in the two hundred series, along with two oh six point oh three. We'll bring those back at the next board meeting.
So in, um, two ten point oh two, which is a regular meeting, what's strike, what is, what has been stricken is, it says that, um, while, uh, let's see here. It talks about. It says something about. Where we can change the meeting. If, at the following board meeting, if for some reason there's some conflict. I believe it's, was, remember, that it struck it out or something, did it not?
Uh, two ten, you said?
Two ten. Point zero two.
Are you on that one right now?
The, the meeting will be rescheduled in accordance with law and policy. So what, so what is, uh, the, what is the law and policy then? Is that we can decide, let's say, something happens and in, in our next meeting, we have to change it. Can we do it at that time, or is there a longer period of time that we have to give in order to change the meeting date?
You'll give me the, which paragraph?
It says, so it's the third paragraph, but if you look at the first, um, sentence that has been stricken, where it says, "the board may, may by majority action at a preceding regular board meeting, change the time and place of the next board meeting." Crossing that out. So is that saying that we can't do that then? Or why is that been crossed out? Because if you look above in the blue, it says, "the meeting will be rescheduled in accordance with the law and policy." What is that, it referring to then?
I believe they're referring to two ten oh three, which is special meeting.
And, and, and so that, that's, that's what it's not talking to me. I'm not sure what it's referring to when it says that.
So I guess you're saying, so we, let's say tonight, we got a meeting scheduled for six o'clock, and something came where we could not have it tonight. So whatever, you know, whatever the reason might be here, we have to have additional meeting or circumstance be on the board's control, that the meeting cannot be held on the regular meeting date, say tonight. The meeting will be rescheduled in accordance with laws and policy. My reading of that would be, we always have to post, I mean, it's at least forty, how many hours?
Agenda?
Twenty-four hours in advance, that's why we always post it on Friday. So like, that's the law that we have to follow, we're gonna reschedule, that we're following the policy in place on a new date, new time.
So that's what, I just wanna make sure that.
Yes.
What that, if what policy is it referring to? So let's say that, we decide that the next meeting, which is gonna be July fourteenth, let's say that none of us can make it. We wanna make it the following, which is July twenty-first. At this meeting, we can do that and change it.
Correct.
We're not, that's giving sufficient time.
Yes.
In order to change the date.
I would say that'd be similar to when we say we're gonna do a meeting, something comes up, and instead of doing it at six o'clock, we're gonna do a five-thirty meeting. So we'd say like, at this meeting, our next meeting at five-thirty, it's ample time, would we've done that before?
Trying to find it, I have another question in here. There was a section here with, I'm gonna fill it out, information that we obviously can't approve as just XXX, I'm trying to find it now.
Is that an E? No, it's an exhibit? Is that, is that policy two fifteen E one, two fifteen E two? Cause if it's an E policy, it's an exhibit, it's a sample, it's not intended to have specific information. It's just a kind of reference.
Participation at board meeting section. Three minutes with public allotted, allotted time for public participation, participation of XXX minutes.
That might just be us.
That's page eighty-seven.
Thank you.
Sorry, yeah. Gigantic document, I'm taking a minute to find it. Page eighty-seven, it is.
Look up the top right corner, Doug, it'll tell you what policy number that is for me.
This, series two hundred, code number two thirteen.
Two thirteen.
We would actually, I, my recommendation there is we put limited to three minutes and we put a period there. Um, that with total allotted time for public participation of X minutes, we have never had that in place.
Um, it, I put the wrong one in the board packet. The, the one I have is three minutes.
Yeah.
That should've been in the original board packet.
Yeah, so the people can speak for three minutes. What this is alluding to would be with a total allotted time for public participation, that you could set and say for ten minutes, or forty minutes, for sixty minutes, you, you are going to take public participation. Think back to some times when we had a lot of people, we never at that point ever closed off saying we weren't going to stop. We just let everybody have a voice during that time. So I think that's where, on that one there, man, that's a good catch. It would just be limited to three minutes, period, and then however the board president may modify this time if appropriate. That would just, that part would come out.
Yeah, I, I guess I was thinking, limiting how many participants we have, it's not something I really wanna do.
Correct. I think that was the most respectful thing we learned from previous years. It was just to be respectful to everyone, everyone's voice is important.
So we can just strike the with total allotted time for public.
You see what I did, Leanne? Do you have that one?
Yeah, that's one, two, per paragraph.
Per paragraph, yes.
So in in here, I do have the three minutes?
Yes, it's there, that's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Put a period after the three minutes.
I have that.
And then with a lot of, a lot of time would be gone.
That's gone.
Text after it.
Let me see here. You, let me go back. Okay. Yes, to you. Here's why. Go to the next page. Thank you. I, Leanne, what you're looking at there is Leanne has put what the new one would be behind it.
Okay, thank you. I was.
Yeah, this is your mind.
I don't have that later on.
So page eighty-nine and it's the, is the new one.
Yes.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
Welcome to my world, Doug.
So yes, she's made the correction. And so it stopped at three minutes, public comment is, says I have to. So what you see behind there is the one that will actually go online.
Oh, I see.
So that's great. That's exactly what we wanted.
Right there.
What we wanted.
Does that make sense, Doug?
It does. Now, in the past, we had allotted individuals three minutes per board meeting, okay? And usually when they wanted to talk, let's say there was something on the agenda. And they wanted to speak at that time as well. Initially, because this is, of course, during a different time, uh, we we were just allotting three minutes per individual regardless of the topic. We want to go back to three minutes per topic if it's the same individual.
So if you go to the next component, so let's say someone were to come in and want to share an opening thought on.
Something.
X, whatever X is, and it's not agenda item, they can do that. When you look to the next piece down, public comment during other board meeting agenda items. You will see also, so speakers will be asked to keep their remarks to three minutes there as well. And again, the board president has to invite them, I should say. Yes. The third line down, the board president will invite visitors to make comments at the appropriate point in the meeting. A visitor at any given time, they may raise their hand, and when recognized by the president, approach the podium. And do all the things that we ask them to do. Give them three minutes again. Yes. So that would match or mirror the protocol we have used in the past.
But I think, is your question that they're limited to three minutes total or per agenda item?
So in the past, because, you know, we used to have really big board meetings and a lot of people talking, that we were limiting to three minutes total per board meeting. Regardless of not limiting it by topic. But, uh, according to this, they could come at the very beginning, say three minutes on, say something. And then if they have a comment to make on each of the topics, then they.
Have three, three minutes.
Minutes.
Right. And so typically how we handled that, remember when Molly reads her statement, or as you used to read it, if it's a non-agenda item.
Right.
They come forward, and then if it's agenda item, they come forward at that point. So a lot of times when people were coming at that time, it was based upon an agenda item typically. So they waived the opening piece on a non-agenda item.
Correct, yeah.
So I guess what he's asking is, do we want to allow three minutes for every agenda item? Or do we want to limit the total speaking time to five minutes of the ten items you. Only get a minute for five, like it, I don't know that.
Recommended.
This is what's recommended.
Um, I can't.
Yeah, that's what's recommended. I think it makes sense for us to go against that. Yeah, and I feel like we still have a little bit of leeway there because they, um. Visitor may raise their hand. And I guess we still have some discretion as far as if we want to allow them.
And this is recommended three minutes. The other thing that we could do is take out the three minutes. And speakers could be asked to keep their remarks within guidance. So board president could give guidance as to how much time they could have, depending on how many agenda items there are.
I don't care for that.
Yeah, I think what we, again, looking back to past protocol, it was very nice that we had three minutes and then when the time was expired. Yeah, and that was the easiest way to manage it, so it wouldn't get long. Because it, back in the time, you could see some board meetings and they would just last for a long period of time. It's hard to end. Okay, everybody gets the same amount of time. We can just monitor it. Mike could set the timer.
And I can't, I couldn't remember if I, I didn't remember seeing it here, although I do remember reading it somewhere. Where if you have a, if you have public participation as an individual who is not behaving. The appropriate professional standards, what happens? Is there something on there about that? Where the board president can.
Well, that last paragraph maybe on page ninety. Um, they have to act with civility.
Okay, I knew that I saw it somewhere. I just wanted to make sure that that was nicely buttoned up.
I just wanted to make sure there wasn't an additional policy that addressed it, um.
It's in that same one.
Because there's two thirteen oh one, which is, um, public concerns. And I think there is, um, additional language here about. Accepted behavior, um, when addressing.
Yeah, and the, yes, and the, but the main one really is in that page ninety. That second one says, if disruptive individual causing disruption, may be asked to leave the board meeting. And then defamatory comments may be subject to legal action.
That was there.
Yep.
And the other thing that I saw was, I think, on eighty-one. In the open meeting, it talks about. And I don't remember, I, I mean, we've gone through this, but is this something new where. Board members who are elected or appointed to office, well, within ninety days of election or taking the oath of office. Participated in an approved training course in Iowa's opening meeting in public records laws? I don't remember, and we've gone through that in our initial orientation about that. But now it seems like there's some approved course that we have to go through, and if so. Uh, will that be done at the time of the orientation that a new board member has with, you, you know how there's several meetings that you have? Will that be done at that time? Deb, do you know about that course?
I think it's something the state is gonna provide.
But that's definitely new.
It's definitely, most definitely new.
Okay. So I'm assuming that, uh.
I think we need to stand by for that.
Okay. And is that something that we, as current board members, have a grandfather in, or do we have to do that as well?
Let us find out for sure.
Yeah, I'd need to check the legal reference on that to see.
Jason, we, we're supposed to do a special work session together.
Too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot coming down in terms of what closed session looks like. Leanne did keep in both our open or both our close and exempt sessions, you'll note the four reasons as to why you can go in each of them. So they're still listed in the board policy, so that people know when we go into closed session, what we can talk about, what we cannot talk about.
And that's our specific language that we kept, because IASB just has a very simple verb, um, but. Brian was adamant that I made sure those four points were in there, so.
I just want people to know why we're going to close session, so they don't, and also as board members, it reminds all of us. The importance of when we go into closed session, you follow the guidelines, so you don't get ourselves in trouble or anything.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I can, um, share with all of you the, uh. Seven oh six that lays out the open meetings law. Thank you.
Thanks, Libby.
The governor signed a number of bills the first of June, so as those come out, we'll keep watching for revisions that come there too. So stay tuned. One that's easier for you to type.
Any other comments or concerns? If not, I'll take a motion and as.
So I have a question. I guess I'll pose it. Few years ago, five, eight years ago, there was the election of some members of Congress who were convicted of pedophilia. And I was thinking as we were going through this, there's a standard, there's a potential to add a standard for board members. That we could include in here. And I don't know how I feel about it, really. It was just something that crossed my mind way back when. Those people got elected and like, well, that would be a terrible role model for people for a school district. And here we are talking about the board itself, and I'm just wondering if we would be interested in providing some guidelines that. Cases like that. I don't think it's necessary. I'm, like I said, I'm kind of on the fence with this. It was just something that occurred to me quite a long time ago, and then having read these things last night, it came back to mind.
So.
What, somebody with a convicted, that got convicted felony?
Yeah, right. Child sex offender, if you're on the child sex offender list, like, you can't, you know, school board. That's kind of like.
Is that already, I mean.
I remember investigating.
Bathroom checks on board members, because if not, that's not something that we would necessarily have access to that.
I do not have any conversation with, I think, IASB. They said that convicted felon can still be on school board, especially if they've done their time. It is not illegal.
Yeah, I'm kind of trying to be narrow.
I, I, if we're talking about sex offender registry, then there is limitations. Because of the nature of being within distance to schools, right? So that, I would say, from a legal perspective, we absolutely could say. That if you are a registered sex offender, that we would have limitations based off of what their restrictions are. Not our restrictions, right? That would be the only.
Well, yeah, that we've, let us pursue that further and see what that would look like, um, because even if it's, uh. Someone who's a convicted sex offender, there are certain times where they can still be a part of school events.
Right, because it, it depends on what the charge was, what level it was.
Or the plan that's put in place.
If you could look into it a little bit, I don't want to get into the whole felon thing, because I'm more in the belief that people can, you know, reform. And so felon's way broad. I'm kicking there and what it represents on the school board itself. So that's at least the perspective.
It's an inter, out of, that was a little content.
And I think, Brian, if we were to look at anything like that, we would probably look at board policy two oh four, which is code of ethics. Which is as a board member, I, X, Y, Z, right? That would probably be where I would. Housing language like that.
Let's check.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you for looking at it very closely, though.
Yes. Attention to detail is great. All right. And if you have any other comments, I will take a motion.
I believe the board approved the current and revised one hundred, two hundred series board policies as presented.
Motion by Director Wogley, second by Director Conkle.
Director Board approved.
And revised one hundred and two hundred series board policies as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Miller. Director Woben.
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle.
Yes.
Mr. Kamwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
Moving on to the Pleasant View Elementary renovation and expansion of the high school. Mr. Struz.
So we are fortunate to have three members of the FRK, uh, architectural firm with us tonight. To start talking about the Pleasant View, uh, addition, the update renovation, we're looking at doing there, as well as the high school CTE. Um, and so tonight, we're gonna actually start with the Pleasant View, um, addition and the update. And kind of give you some background. This has been on, if you remember our last five-year plan update. We had both of these projects on the list to do. Uh, the Pleasant View one is one because we just have not had the opportunity to expand that building in terms of the entrance of the school. We also have needed additional office space in that school. We just wouldn't have enough, wouldn't have added AEA or. Um, school-based therapy, we just not have room or space for them. So this addition is helping us achieve both of those. And kind of bringing Pleasant View into kind of what some of our other elementary schools look like as well. The second one, which we'll talk about, which Tom will talk about here as well, which is the high school expansion, the CTE. Part of what's driving that is just our current enrollment numbers that we have in those programs, not having a space available. Recall, right now, we are teaching two of our family consumer science classes at the same time in the same classroom, because we don't have enough kitchen space. So some things of that nature. So we'll address all those tonight, answer any questions you have. But this is the first step of the schematic designs of where we see this going. And they will outline the schematic design, the timeline, what the anticipated cost will be, as you've seen before. And we'll talk about what our next steps will be after tonight too. So Jesse or Anna, who would like to take over?
Um, I'll start.
All right.
I'm Anna Lukens. Um, I will first be, uh, reporting on the Pleasant View Elementary School addition and renovation. Um, and then Jesse and Tom will take over about the high school project, so. I'm an architect with FRK. Um, I will be, uh, on this project throughout. FRK will be providing, um, both architectural services and structural engineering in-house. And we have teamed up with IMEAG here in the Quad Cities, uh, for mechanical and electrical engineering. They are also currently working on, um, an analysis of the fire suppression systems, um, in place at the elementary school right now. So we've already engaged the state fire marshal on this. There's no concerns for. The new addition or renovations with fire code at this time, um, and she's aware of the project so far. So.
Let, you know, and he'll.
We jump to the project scope page. Uh, one more. Perfect. Thank you. Um, so an overview of this project, uh, the main part of it will be the building addition. As Brian had described, it'll help relieve some of the pressures that the building is feeling right now. The addition will be, uh, mostly, um, an administrative suite, uh, for your principal, dean of students, uh, conference room. New main office and, uh, nurses' office directly off of the, the new main reception area. With this addition, we will be rerouting the main entry of the building to basically the other side of the building. Currently, students come in, um, the main entry off of the bus route. This will change the main entry to the parent drop-off side of the building. So we'll be making this, um, a little bit more obvious. Um, a big part of this project was an expansion of the nurses' office, so it's almost double and square footage to what you currently have. Um, and, uh, moving into the renovated spaces. We, um, are currently planning to do renovations to the cafeteria and one science classroom. The cafeteria, we're just looking at replacing flooring. At this time, you have a, a plastic laminate tile in there. It's starting to chip in particular places, so we're just looking at taking out and redoing some of the flooring. The science room is a bit more extensive. We're looking at replacing casework, furniture, and some of the finishes in that room. Um, flooring and painting the walls and potentially a ceiling replacement. Right now, we are also considering, um, an alternate bid, um, to do work similar to other work that's been done in the district. Around the exterior of the building, we have a corrugated metal panel, some of which is painted, some of which is not. Um, it's gone in at different times throughout the building's life. And we're looking at taking that out and replacing it with something, uh, a little more consistent with the design aesthetic we're looking at for the new construction.
So if you were to drive up to Pleasant View and look, right now, we have a lot of the painted tin that's around there, or like on the gymnasium exterior, the, uh. Library, classroom area, that'll all be replaced.
Could you just jump to the next slide? So next is the proposed project schedule. Um, so similar to this meeting today, we're gonna try and line up, uh, some of our board meetings, uh, between the two projects. Um, just to be more efficient with your time. Um, we are looking for, uh, schematic design approval this evening, as Brian laid out. We're looking, um, for a design development phase approval at, um, your late August meeting. At that point, um, school have restarted, and I spoke with Stephen, and we will be meeting with, uh, some of his staff. To make sure that the design is applicable to their needs. Um, so at that point, we'll be able to move on from design development into our. Um, so at that point, we'll be able to move on from design development into our final stage of just creating documents of our final design. We're looking at your school board meeting October thirteenth, uh, for final approval on construction documents. And then the following week, we'll go to our final print. So right now, we have about a one-month bid period for this project, that's pretty typical for a project of this size. And bidding on, uh, Thursday, November twentieth. So post-bid, we are showing this as a seventeen-month construction, that's pretty long. That being said, this is going to, um, need to be what we call a phased construction, because of uh, the work being done to the interior of the building that would need to be done during the summers. So the main addition to the building can get started pretty much right away, that shouldn't, some of your traffic will be affected. We've already talked with our civil engineer about how to redirect, uh, parent drop-off. Um, but the building can get started right away. Some of the interior renovations will follow, um, the two summers that will span through this project. Any questions on the schedule at this time?
So in that regard, we'd be looking at somewhere in late winter this coming school year, that twenty twenty-six, whether it's January, February, March, somewhere in that area, to actually start construction on the new building at that time.
So it looks like the, the bid award is like in December, but we are comfortable that we'd be able to start construction right away?
Yeah, I think, I think it was November twenty-fourth, potentially, for that board meeting that we bring it to the table.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, that being said, it is, it can be very weather-dependent. We will get started on construction administration, which is some of the behind-the-scenes paperwork type work. That will start right away, no matter what. Um, when it comes to actual physical movement out at the site, that's gonna be up to the contractor and just dependent on weather conditions. Okay?
So the early part of that, presumably is not related to like concrete pouring, right, because in the middle of the winter, I assume they would never do something like that?
Yeah, the early part of the project will really just be demo of the site. Um, there's quite a bit of paving, um, up to the site, there's decorative boulders that will need to be moved and relocated. Um, and kind of figuring out site circulation at the time, so making sure that the site is well-protected and roped off, fenced off, so parent drop-off isn't coming into sight at that time. Next, we'll look at our preliminary cost opinion. So right now, we're, um, estimating this just over three million for, um, all this work that, and that is including the alternate of the exterior metal material. Right now, the addition we're showing at four hundred square feet, which it, sorry, four hundred dollars per square foot, um, which is fairly typical and a fairly nice finish for this type of project. And you'll see the renovations, um, vary in price per square foot, that's just due to the nature of the type of renovation. The, um, cafeteria is just a replaced floor, the existing admin space, that's gonna have to be fully renovated into new spaces, which you'll see momentarily, and the existing science classroom, uh, is also just a fit and finish.
Flooring.
We're hoping that it's not the bad A word, but we'll have to see. Leland?
Fifty fifty.
Yeah, there you go.
Come on, Leland.
Yeah, we'll have to see.
Okay. Okay, so this, um, plan shows you just an overall view of the work being done to the building. That science room to the east is kind of off on its own, um, but the rest is kind of, uh, centralized to our, what will be our new main entrance. So the next page shows a blown-up version of this addition. The yellow being the new addition and green being the renovated spaces, so. One thing I haven't touched on is the current administration suite, um, which is the top right, green. Um, that is all gonna become different types of spaces, we have a storage room, a workroom, and a changing room, uh, for students. And so that interior will be completely blown out and redone, and that'll be most likely the second summer of this project.
So background of that part, right now, you know, where our nurse's office, right now, it's a very small, narrow nurse's office. We house two of our level-three programs out there, and so that far-right one, where it says, um, changing room, that would be fully equipped for a level-three program for students, if they're on a wheelchair, they go in there, they have space, there'd be a changing table in there, so it just allows adults and kids to be in, or a child to be in there and move around comfortably. The workroom that's next to that, I believe, um, would be typically, it's across the hall, that's a copier room, those are the things, so that just comes into that area there. And then can never have enough storage, so Anna has put in some storage space there as well.
So that changing room will still be a nurse's room, too, then?
No.
So the nursing's room will be moved where?
Oh, I see over there.
Correct, yes.
Like that.
And the workroom right now is kind of like where the principal's office is, right?
The workroom right now, that's listed there, would be kind of splitting the current main office and the principal's office in that area right there, yes.
Uh, so quick touching on the rest of the renovation in this area. Moving south, um, where you currently have your guidance area, this whole set of three rooms, we plan to renovate and have access from the main hall into these rooms, um, for a little bit more privacy and to, actually to make these spaces a bit bigger and function for these programs a bit, bit better.
What I'd add there, just for your knowledge, if you go in the library, we have a loft in the library that has a stairwell that goes up. That's currently where we have our E L P programming, that would be moved out of there and into one of the, in a different space. So this is kind of helping us free up some of that as well.
So kind of to walk you through the new addition, um, we have a big front entry, uh, towards the west, this is facing the current parking lot. Um, this might change a little bit, just based on where this falls, uh, near the parking lot. Um, we still are working through that, but it brings you, um, into a high-ceiling vestibule, um, to bring a lot of light into that space, um, or directly into the main office, uh, through a secure entry. Off the main office, we have our new, uh, nurse's office, um, with their own private toilet room. We have three private offices included in this addition, principal, dean of students, and school-based therapy, plus one, uh, medium-sized conference room as well. The vestibule towards the right is to try and maintain the flow of traffic, uh, for students to get from the cafeteria out to the playground. Um, we were told by Steven that that's a really important part of the day, um, they currently have a door that goes straight out there, and wanted to try and keep that as close as we could, so. In the large atrium in the center, uh, most of which is existing, we're trying to keep that as open as possible and still well-lit, um, because it's a really nice space with a high ceiling. Um, so even though this is all gonna be behind a big firewall, we'll have a coiling door that can stay open unless there's a fire emergency, to keep that whole corridor open and airy.
We did not discuss in the main office area next, just behind the nurse's room, you'll see a mother's room. Um, that is one thing that we do not have at Pleasant View either, that this would give us a, a definite added benefit for our mothers.
Any questions on the floor plan?
I have a question about the entry, I don't know if it's a Brian or Joe question, so with the renovation of this entry, are we gonna put the biometric?
Visitor-aware program?
Yeah.
Yes, they will all have that, so starting this fall, all of our schools minus the high school will have those in place.
Okay. So this is a very schematic rendering, uh, you'll see a more finalized version the further we get into this process. Um, the direction we're looking at right now is very similar to some of your other new construction, that was kind of, um, some feedback we had from the district. So you'll see, this is similar to your junior high, um, and at this point, this is very preliminary, we are only showing something similar, and materiality is still really up in the air and very flexible at this point. Um, but you can see the higher space, we're trying to keep windows around, uh, the top, uh, skylight almost as much as possible to bring light in, that nurse's office will be the only space that doesn't have an exterior window. So we wanted to try and wrap that as much as possible with some overhead natural light.
Give Anna and Jesse credit, they listened very well the day they came and talked to us, and came back with a new design to the entrance, so it was very well done. And we'll see how far we can go out into the parking lot, if we have to push it back a little bit, but we'll get there, but that's a, a nice, nicely done.
Yeah, so at this time, um, any questions on this project?
Tell me, so the best entry is gonna come through the other direction, right? So there's still gonna be that metal parking lot in the middle there, and then they just go around, basically?
In this, in the back addition, it would still, everything would stay the same.
The buses go there today.
In the front, and the parents' drop-off in the back, like they do now with parking in between there. Yep.
So the parent drop-off would still be the same, too?
Yep, parent drop-off is still the same, the bus drop-off is still the same, this just becomes our main entrance, so when people want to come to the school, they would come to the back. And we'll have some parking along the, along that entrance, so visitors can come and have this place, face, space to park as well.
Yeah, because that's.
That'd be the main entrance now.
Right now, so we're not losing any parking, this is just going over that cement patio.
You're spot on, yes.
And the, the playground will stay the same, there'll just be closer access to it, basically.
You got it.
Not redoing the playground.
No, we're not redoing the playground. And anything that has approval, all approval has to go through Debbie on this project, so. It's near and dear to her heart, so I will make sure that this one is done well.
Are you, so far, Debbie? So far, yeah.
Being she went to school there and everything else, her kids have gone to school there. Yes, so the tradition continues, so we gotta make sure we please Debbie.
One question I had, and this may not be the best time to ask it, but it is something, since we have you guys here, you know, with some of our, with another project, our fourth group project, there was an issue with venting, um, where something was enclosed, and, um, we had to redo that at a cost to our district. And so, you know, looking at all the pressures we face as a district financially, how can we be assured that, um, whose responsibility is it to make sure that these designs take into account these, um, details? So that, you know, when it's all said and done, we have this budgeted amount, but we're not having extra costs because a detail was left off. Whose responsibility is that, and how will you guys help with that, please?
That's a great question, so, um, that responsibility will fall to us, the architects. We're the ones coordinating all these, uh, different disciplines. When it comes to something specific like venting, I am really gonna lean on my mechanical engineer, who's much more knowledgeable in that than I am, and try and make sure that that is as thought-out as it can be. One thing to keep in mind with this project is for this addition, it's going to be a completely separate H VAC, uh, system than the rest of the building. Um, it will almost function as its own building, so that's how we're treating it in this, uh, in this design as a new building. That, is your question?
Um, two other questions, I do remember that when, and it, the addition, um, the other addition was said, you know, where, when you go towards that, towards the science room, and then there's that off area that got built. And that corridor there, wasn't there an area where we had leaking of fluid, of water? That was a newer area. And so I guess I'm also concerned to make sure that doesn't happen on this new project. So you, it would, I don't know if it'd be helpful you, for you to know that information, because that was built, that, that was a newer addition that was built several years ago, and then we had leaking in that hallway.
What the, it's not the roof leaking right there, it's the actual roof drains is what's leaking. So you're spot on, I mean, it's, roof drains just weren't installed properly. So when the, the water around the roof drains was actually not, instead of going down the drain, it was actually coming inside the building, leaking inside the building. And that got fixed probably like three or four months ago. But we bought it for years, because everybody thought it was a roof leak, not realizing it was a drain leak, because the drains weren't installed properly.
So then, did we go back to the drainage company and tell them, hey, this was not done properly, or whatever?
No, it's because you were way beyond, there's no more warranty or anything left.
So I want to make sure that that's done properly. Other thing, um, was in the cost assessment. Uh, I remember when we've done projects in the past, there is a number that we give, that's sort of a, it's, it's a built-in number, where if there are overages, does this include, in this estimate, that built-in number, where if there's overages, we have it built into the system?
Um.
I don't see it a, as a line item.
Right, right, that is not included in this, um, so we have two different options, um, a contingency or an allowance, both of which are numbers that would be decided on by you, the district, on how much extra you'd want to include in case there is anything that should come up that would be an added cost.
Is there a reason why this project does not have a contingency like our previous projects have?
I, I can jump in on that, Dr. Wogly, as well. At this point, for our cost opinion, a very schematic design, that, that contingency, we've built into those square-foot numbers. But further on, we can pull that out, and once the district, Leland, and Mr. Klingon Smith, and, and, um, and then Struz, let us know what that contingency should be, we'll put that in as a separate line item, so you can see that very clearly.
Just because I remember when we approve bills when the project occurs, we're like, well, this is over, but we have a built-in contingency. It makes us feel a bit better that.
Yes.
It's not these overages that we have to count for.
I would assume labor and drills, you have to decide, or you're gonna go with the projection of being a year out? Or are you saying relatively stable at this stage?
Gosh, I wish I had a crystal ball.
In the past, right, like it was hard to get equipment and labor, and maybe that's still a problem, but if it's like leveled out, is it easier to reject now? Or is it still all over the place, and you're really just?
We're, we're finding that the, um, the bid market now is a little more stable, as we have conversations with our contractors. Um, at this stage, we go more conservative in our cost opinion to kind of hedge that a little bit, as we begin to develop the design further, kind of look at it as a bull's eye right now, or a little farther out. As we get closer, we'll, we'll be able to dial that in a little bit more, we'll continue to have those conversations, but. Um, if you recall, the, the current project under construction of the high school, I had a pretty conservative cost opinion of that one, and we came under in that one, which is awesome, we'd love to come in under this one. If I had a crystal ball, I'd be in Las Vegas or something.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I do like the design, and I do like keeping a consistent theme, I feel like we get a lot of compliments on our tower work, and then also the new addition coming on, and we got a great view of it from, uh, the bleachers at the stadium, and I'm getting a lot of good feedback, so I do like the idea of trying to keep our, sorry, our new construction and additions, um, somewhat themed, and it's, it looks nice, it's, it's, uh, very aesthetically pleasing with the, I don't know, it's like the, almost the wood grain look with the, with the blue, so it's very nice.
Contemporary looking.
We're really excited to get rid of that, like, the plastic across of the high school.
Well, you still have three spots where it's still living for a while, so.
We have to do something about that, and, um, see how, we'll see how we do on our allowances and contingency, maybe. All right, well, thank you.
Were you going to, um, vote on each?
Yeah, did we?
Did you, or? We did all, we'll just go through yours, and then we'll come back to most of both of them. We did all, we'll just go through yours and then we'll come back to most of both of them.
Super. Again, I've been um in front of you guys before, Tom, along with FRK. Jesse Mo is on the project as well. Um, do we get just three minutes or is that?
Just for you, Tom.
We'll go through the the high school presentation. Jesse will get us started.
Yes. So um to begin, I'd like to introduce the project team, which is a little bit different from the elementary. Um, if you go to like three. Yes, so we recognize that Pleasant Valley Community School District is at the front and center of every project. We recognize that the students, the district and the community has unique needs that we are mindful of throughout the design process. So with that being said, FRK Architects and Engineers will be overseeing the structural engineering, civil engineering, mechanical and electrical, um, which you can see are Raker Roads Engineering as well as IMEG. Um, and if you recognize those names, they are the ones currently working on the high school addition project right now, um, which is going well and going smoothly. Um, so for continuity's sake, we will be using those uh first. And then you'd move on to the next slide, please.
So um, just to kind of go through the project scope, uh Superintendent Struce uh mentioned some of the the key points here. So addressing the CTE areas, um, one of the the key concerns that um Mike and his team have talked about and and the district has has indicated, it's just not a safe situation to have your auto lab be a separate building. So what we'll be doing with this addition is taking that auto lab down. And when the current project is done, you won't need that visitors concessions anymore, so those will go away and we'll infill with new construction at that point, which will be the um, the building trades, wood shop and the new auto uh shop at that point. Uh, in the existing building, we will go ahead and renovate uh most of those interior spaces with a big push being uh for your FCS labs to create two foods labs as well as education space. Part of the addition then also will be um to address the preschool program and create a new entry sequence for parents dropping off and picking up kids. And then having that teaching lab as well as uh the area for observation and education for the high school students. So um expanded, a little bit more efficient layout for the CTE spaces. And um we'll uh also, as I'm not sure if this will be an alternate bid or a part of the project, but um Brian and Leland brought us around to look at some of the existing toilet rooms and locker room in the main high school area that we wanna try to address with this project while we have contractors there as well. So that's the project scope. Um, the next slide uh talks about the cost opinion. And again, um, to your your question, Dr. Wogly, we we do have um the contingency built into the square foot numbers now, but we'll pull that out as a separate line item, so that you can see that very clearly. Um, we are at um, let's see, just up seven point nine, just shy of eight million right now. Um, we were hoping to have it come down a little bit. Um, previously, we had looked at um some early budgetary numbers for you, which I think you looked at this past January, but we had a little bit of scope creep, um, so we we are at the eight million. At this point, I, my sense is that the district feels comfortable moving forward again as we dial in those numbers, as we get more information, as we as we chug through the design. Um, that all in number does include what we call soft costs, which is your furniture, your equipment, uh your furnishings, uh as well as um the soft costs related to um design team survey, um special inspections and and all those items. So um we'll we'll continue to to work on refining and uh um getting those numbers to to be as accurate as we can. We have conversations with the contracting community just to get a sense of where costs are these days, so. Um, the next slide talks about the schedule and this will also be a phased schedule. We did break out the renovation phase as a separate line item on here. The idea will be to bid this project, um, after the first of the year, we'll uh have project documents printed in January, take bids in February and get started in the spring. The first thing that will happen, and we've had conversations with with Mike and his team, um, after spring break of twenty twenty six, we'll get in and take that auto lab down. So that pro- program will be displaced starting after spring break next year. And then um we will do the new addition first and then all the programs will move into that space and empty out those existing areas. So phase two would be following that for about, kind of depends on on kind of our conversations and how extensive that is. Um, we'll we'll get that knocked out. And um there's a chance that we could be actually done by the the winter of that year, but right now we're we're looking at that being another full year. So we would be done with the addition for um the twenty twenty seven school year and the renovation spaces in time for the twenty twenty eight school year. So there's a little bit more extensive, a little more complex project, so a little bit more time on that. Mostly because of the new spaces needing to be ready before we can work on those existing spaces. Um, the drawings I think are the next. Um, and uh we we do see the the green is the renovated area and the um yellowish color would be the new addition. In a moment, Jesse will Jesse will kind of show you how that looks from the site perspective. But if you're familiar with that area now, um, the metal shop, we're gonna look to expand that uh just to give them a little bit more elbow room and some of the classroom spaces next to it. Those programs will seek new locations in the building with the new addition coming onboard by by this time. So we can uh capture those for the CTE and FCS classrooms. Um, where the current woods lab is will become a large robotics program area, we're pretty excited about that. And then um you'll see where the FCS labs are. We're looking at making those spaces a little bit more efficient, a nice large foods lab for advanced foods courses and other foods labs for the basic foods courses with some prep in between. And then the addition really fills in that um courtyard area between the existing building and the existing auto shop. We'll be infilling all of that. Automotive's lab just will sit basically right where the current automotive lab is and building trades right next to that with the adjacent service spaces, um, like um finished room and storage and so forth. And then just to the west of that will be two spaces. One will be the preschool lab and then the classroom for the kids who are learning about that program and observing the kids in there, as well as an entry area for parents bringing kids um to that program. Um, there are also a couple of classrooms adjacent to those two large uh labs. The auto and the building trades will be high bay spaces, so they'll be about twenty-two feet high inside, so there'll be a lot of space to um vertical as well as um floor space for all the equipment needs in there. Large overhead um doors that will face east. We're looking at have those, having those have glass in them, so we're bringing a lot of natural light in there. And um these, this new addition will be six feet below the floor elevation existing there. Just the topography, we we can't be at the same level to get cars in and out of the auto lab. We need to push that down, so it's more relative than circulation space there. So you'll go down a series of ramps as well as some stairs and you'll get then to that lower level from the upper level. And that preschool program will be at that lower level as well. There again, because we need to be at the the site circulation level for those kids and their parents, um, bringing students into that space. Questions on the floor plan, otherwise I will move to a a site plan.
Can we go back to the schedule for a second? So you're gonna take the auto lab down in spring break at twenty-six.
Yes.
Did your follow-on comment basically say we're not gonna have auto lab until twenty-eight?
They'll have to relocate it and I think that the auto. You're looking at places where that can take place.
Yes. I understood. We talked to him and he thinks he can work it out where they will do most of the stuff they would do in the the first quarter or third quarter, I guess it would be. In the classroom then for the fourth quarter.
So for the twenty twenty-seven year, they would. Not sure yet. It worked out.
We're meeting on Wednesday, July second.
Yes.
Our our construction, we need to talk about just things like that from a scheduling standpoint.
So if I look at uh the preschool area and we talk about that being accessible, are we adding any parking around there? Because it's.
We don't have a site plan fully developed, but kind of right in here, we're looking at some parent parking and then we'll have a sidewalk. They can be brought right to this vestibule and into this space. So we're kind of working on that. You'll see when Jesse Jesse shows you the the site plan, it's pretty tight in there.
Yeah.
I think we can, we won't have a slice of plaza at the current high school addition where that visitor um area experiences. But I think we'll be able to open that up and and um have parking as well as that new new entry for the kids going. Ready to move to the site?
It's part of the garage doors, though, they do look beautiful being all glass. Um, I just wanted to um check about safety and security. A, if the garage doors are open, does that provide, and maybe that's not your question, but for us, um, access to the building? Um, that, you know, we have the whole rest of the building secure, but is there gonna be access to the rest of the building through those? And then also if they're glass, um, you know, would it, they look great, like I said, but would it make more sense if it wasn't glass? That could have been penetrated, but also keeps um students maybe less visible in there and also be uh more economic from a cost standpoint?
Yes, to all three of those um discussion items. In terms of how um those garage doors and those high bay spaces work from a security perspective, right now you'll often see those garage doors and those kinds of programs at all sorts of high schools around, where a lot of times they have those open and they're moving things in and out. So that just becomes a a day-to-day security issue that needs to be addressed by the the staff, the administrators in the building, the educators. Um, with the glass, we could look at partial glass on those. We could look at more traditional garage doors, the overhead doors you'll see like on a county engineering building or something. And maybe there are, there is row of windows, so we get some natural light in, but you don't have that visual connection. Those would be less expensive as well, so if we start thinking about value engineering. But our early conversations were having that transparency, having that connectivity uh is a plus, but cautionary with those those items.
With that, and I'm sure you, I don't know if you know off the top of your head, I mean, is it saving us a couple hundred dollars or saving us a significant amount of money if we went from an all glass to one that had just a row of?
Yeah. I can, I can give you a pretty um granular number on that. A large overhead sectional door, like a traditional garage door you'd see, you know, at a mechanical, you know, or something like that. Um, those for the size doors, we're probably looking at around twelve thousand dollars for one of those. If you go ahead and have it to be aluminum door with glass, that jumps that up to maybe twenty thousand dollars. So it'd be significant thousands of dollars to 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 look at, um, which way to do those doors.
Something definitely to think about. We had this conversation last, was it last Wednesday, we talked about those doors? Cause this first drawing did not have glass doors on them, but you try to have a natural lighting and having it in space, there's a lot of advantages to that. You talked about our commons area where we have windows. I mean, a thing we could consider if we like the windows is, do you put on uh uh shatter, shatterproof film on those as well? Still lets light in, that might be an option if we like that, you know, a few layers up.
What are most schools, have you done, seen this at other schools? Do most schools have the doors like this or is it very?
It really depends on the district, depends on the budget. You have a certain number of dollars as a district that you allocated toward this project. Then we need to just have conversations during design, where do we spend those dollars? And where do we spend a little bit more and have an economical approach someplace else? So it's a given, a take. But um we've done projects where they have the very open, transparent and it seems to work well. We've had that where we started out with that approach and had to value engineer away from that. So it really is kind of across the board in terms of what districts are looking at. I think that the one thing we are seeing, even if it's an opaque garage door, we do put that row of windows at at some point in there, so you do let some natural light. And those can be wherever you want them to be, they can be above head height, so they're just, there're more light coming in from above. So we will, we'll certainly um explore that and and make sure that's a, we could have, good, healthy conversations about that.
One, sorry, one last question regarding those doors. Where would we see, like if we were sitting in the stadium, would we see them? Or are they, I guess, what direction are they facing?
They'll be, yeah, directly east, yeah.
We want to see it from the stadium, we'd just see them as we drove by to the back parking lot because they're facing east.
They're facing the tennis court.
You'd be seeing it from the tennis courts.
You'd be seeing them right up these windows too.
Yeah, exactly.
It'll be pretty, it'll be pretty visible area. If you think about that now where the auto lab is in that that area, it it'll be pretty prominent. We we can take a look at the site and then the greens here, we could certainly circle back to the floor plan questions or whatever questions you might have. Wanna talk about the site?
So this is a site plan, um, the, with a satellite image of the existing high school and the its current addition. Um, so you can see that there is a general footprint, footprint of the addition where we will be connecting the existing auto shop and um concessions. Um, it's a larger volume, which will allow for better circulation for students as well as obviously more space for them to work and learn. Um, as Tom mentioned, we are mindful of um the site circulation, which will have to be considerate of. We can move on to the next slide.
Before, before you move on, I just love this one Google. Who knew when this picture was taken, but the entire addition is there, but yet they haven't taken out anything up there yet. So this is what, three or four months old?
Two weeks.
Now that parking lot's getting uh, you know, almost uh to gray and then the the visitors' ticket booth is still there, but now that's gone. Yeah, you can see how close all of this is, so this this gets reworked as we continue to have conversations with our civil engineer.
And then this is a southwest perspective, um, so we can see the part of the preschool as well as um the auto shop. We um are electing to do masonry as well as metal panels and wood veneer, which you can see on that western half. Um, and this is for aesthetic purposes as well as to match the um high school addition that is being done right now. Um, and then if you would go to the next slide, please. This is the northeastern views, uh which you can see those garage doors as previously mentioned. Um, and yes, they will let in natural light, which will be an added benefit on that eastern side. And then next slide, any questions at this point?
I have a couple. Um, would it be beneficial and more cost-effective to bid out both of these projects along the same time? Because they're only a few months apart.
Just give you the punch on that one, yes, we've we've, we're thinking about that. I've had conversations with um Bruce Builders about that as well, cause if you recall, they did that with Forest Grove and the.
Yes.
Um, these projects are are pretty significantly different in scope. Um, but they are about the same timeline and maybe about the same distance as Forest Grove was from the junior high. The benefits are that you have one contractor you're working with, one set of general conditions and then we can work out how the pay apps and all those things work. So um we're looking into that to see if there'd be any cost savings to the owner on that one.
And then from the cost standpoint, again, you know, when we were doing our approval of bills, I had asked a question because we were paying about forty-five thousand dollars for the builder's insurance for the high school project. You have in here it to be about ten thousand dollars is for the builder's insurance. Is that an accurate number, given the fact that we paid forty-five thousand currently? I know that the Husco project is a bigger project than this, but is it um, is that number pretty accurate, you think, with the scope?
I I, at this point, I would say I don't think it is an accurate number. What we'll need to do is talk to Mike and have him reach out to your insurance carrier to to get that one to be a little bit closer. Could be more like twenty thousand rather than ten thousand. These are numbers that I was a little bit more familiar with some years ago, but I think the insurance industry's really been changing a lot.
We've had a lot of changes, a lot of, a lot of.
That, those costs are are really going up. Yep. So yeah, thank you for pointing that out, we'll wanna revisit that one.
Sure.
That's all.
So timeline, if we approve this down the road and keep this project moving forward, it's basically we'll be finishing up the high school project and we're basically just moving to the other side of the building. Once it's done, the other one's starting.
God bless you, Mike. Yeah, I just, uh, one of the things I wanna mention is just thank you to the board, super tenders, Drews, your educators, your administrators, cause they've been nothing but bending over backwards to help Jesse and 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 our team with the field investigation, access to buildings, answering questions. Thank you very much for for the, what we've been getting from the district team.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Motion for both of those benefits.
Yes, so I will start with the motion for the schematic design for Pleasantview.
And the board approved the schematic design phase for Pleasantview Elementary School.
Motion by Director Canwisher, second by Director Conkle, that the board approved the schematic design phase for Pleasantview Elementary School. We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler? Dr. Wogley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Parkman?
Yes.
And then for the uh CTE.
I move that board approve the schematic design phase for Pleasant Valley High School.
Second.
Motion by Director Wogley, second by Director Ayers, that the board approved the schematic design phase for Pleasant Valley High School. We'll call vote please.
Mrs. Wheeler? Dr. Wogley?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Parkman?
Yes.
Once again.
Yeah, thank you.
Stay travels back.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to uh seventh and twelfth attendance, discipline and liaison reports. Thank you for waiting all night.
So patient.
Uh, Mr. Wick.
Colin's ready to go.
From the end.
I'm gonna talk to you about numbers, but nothing with costs, I promise.
We'd like that.
Uh, so Colin Wickin, uh eighth grade dean and athletic director of the junior high. Um, so I'll just kinda go through, I'm not gonna go through each page of the data, I just kinda made a one page summary. I'll just kinda skim through that here quickly. Um, our student population this school year, I was nine hundred and thirty eight students. Um, there were five hundred and eighteen referrals um uh input into Infinite Campus. Uh, that is a hundred and nine more than last school year. I have some thoughts on that as we go through this as well. Um, this represents twenty s- a twenty six point seven increase from the previous school year. Uh, two hundred and twenty of the nine hundred and thirty eight students in our building accounted for those referrals, which is about a a quarter of our student population. Um, the average daily attendance, I was hoping with the uh cenobial twenty or twenty five, we'd see this as a monster increase, but our numbers are already pretty good prior to that, so it only went up a tenth of a percent. Uh, but with a student increase of forty four more students from the previous school year, um going up, I think in any level is is a an accomplishment. Hoping to see more, but didn't see that. Uh, digging into behaviors, I I separated out the top six um frequent um behaviors. The top one being disrupted behavior, uh that was a one percent increase from the year prior. Um, a small celebration would be the uh twenty four point five percent decrease in inappropriate use of technology. That does include cell phones. Um, eleven of those were tied to a Chromebook, so of that eighty six, seventy five would have been cellphone violations for second or third offense. Uh, tardies was a big increase. Um, a- again, I have, there's three of them that are bolded as major increases. I have ideas uh in reviewing this with Mr. Pekan on why those were increases. Um, so tardies were a hundred and four, a hundred four percent increase. Uh, inappropriate language was a thirty three percent increase. Uh, insubordination, a three hundred and seven percent increase, and then rule violation um and eighty five percent as well. And again, I have uh some reason on why those were um that high um in terms of of in- increases. Um, trends are seeing the data, so again, I went page by page and just tried to find something to talk about. Um, over the course of ten years of that the data's been collected, um our our student population, our enrollment has increased thirty seven point seven percent. Uh, for this last school year, um eighteen of our students were out of school suspended. Uh, that is uh roughly one point nine percent of our population. Uh, this is eleven less than last year. Uh, forty nine of our students served eighty one in school suspensions. Um, the use of in-school suspension at the junior high level has actually increased. Uh, we have found that uh our students do not work uh at school when they're at home. Um, so in ti- kinda balancing out and trying to keep academics at our forefront, uh we've been using in-school suspension uh in combination with out of school, but more so in school if we can. Uh, fighting and hitting accounted for twenty five of those forty nine suspensions, uh which is actually six less than the previous school year. After school detentions, uh in my time, this is, I just ended in year five, uh these have not really been utilized. Uh, this fourth quarter, uh Mr. Pekan actually uh reached out to certified staff and asked if we could find uh were any of the staff members uh interested in supervising? Uh, the after school detentions, and there were like four or five of them, so for the fourth quarter, we did start using those. Uh, we look forward to that as being a resource force for next year. Um, as we have staff that are being paid and and filling that time, the after school detentions would run. The student would go to their advisor teacher uh from the two thirty two to three ten timeframe, and then they'd report to the library um and tell uh the bus, the late run buses could take them home and parents can't come get them. So that's kind of the timeframe of those. Uh, we're looking at referrals by event type. Um, I know I talked about some of the numbers had increased. Uh, I, looking at all those, I I look at those as celebrations in every single one of them. The reason uh for inappropriate use of technology going down, I think is a celebration. And all the rest of them going up, you're probably wondering, well, why would that be a celebration? Well, our MTSS team um had worked uh extensively on uh starting at the beginning of the school year, uh defining behavior. Um, creating classroom expectations that were posted around the school building and said almost daily, either by myself or Mr. Pekan, of being safe, being respectful, being responsible. Um, and then they created a behavior flow chart that really told teachers, if this is happening in this context, then this is what you do. So when you see the the bottom four increases, those are all four part of that behavior flow chart, which are telling teachers, if if the student's saying this or being this or doing this, then these are the the steps you're taking. So that would be the increase in those. Um, the also, I would say the MTSS work um impacted our conditions for learning survey, uh which uh we had five categories we were measured on, and the junior high went up at all five. Um, the biggest being student to student relationship, that increased eleven percent uh from the year previous, so.
I have to say, with the increase in referrals, but also the increase in um our conditions for learning survey data, I will give huge kudos to the junior high team, the MTSS team, the administrators for leading the work on the tier one behavior refinement. Like Mr. Wickin said, I think because the expectations were more clear and staff were clear on what, how to handle things, that's the reason why you saw the increase in referrals. But that's also why we saw such a dramatic increase on our conditions for learning survey at the junior high. So there's a lot to celebrate there.
So that kinda was my uh Cliff Notes version of everything, and I'll put it up for questions from you guys.
I think what you just talked about with the MTSS stuff's really exciting, mostly because, of course, those students move on into Mike's building next, and hopefully we see rates then decline. Already gotten the message, right, in seventh and eighth grades.
It's been great work, I I was interested in what the data would say. Uh, I I didn't think these would be the numbers, but when I'm trying to process through what those numbers meant, it it all filtered back to one thing. And Mike thought the same thing.
So is that same initiative that the MTSS has done in the junior high, you having that same initiative at the high school so that there's consistency? Cause I think you want, it's for the high school to, the junior high to work very diligently as you have, and then they enter into the high school, and there's a different set of expectations that might be more lenient.
So the high school, and I I can let Mike and Adam speak to this, but they've worked um a long time this this past school year that just ended um with their building leadership team to create the Spartan Way, which outlines behavior expectations at the high school level. And they worked hard to um come up with lessons that teachers are going to be doing with students um right at the beginning of the year to roll that out to all students, so it's very similar work.
And they align perfectly with what did you try?
So, I mean, is insubordination just where like the 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 faculty member or the the teacher or whoever it is tells a student something and they just don't listen, is that?
That's how I define it. Yeah, you're asked to do something and you're not doing what's expected.
And if you're curious about um the work that the junior high has done, I can share this um behavior flow chart with you. Um, it's accessible, it it'll pop up as a Google slide, but it has some links that you can click on, and it outlines the expectations of all classrooms, what teachers need to do to make sure that we're um being proactive in our in our measures and our expectations. And then also has the procedures um to follow when the behaviors are not managed with those preventative measures. I can share that with you, so you can take a look.
What would be an example of a rules violation?
Uh, could be all sorts of things, uh like improper behavior in the hallway. Um, you know, like, more, it's more so like, it was, probably should read expectation violation, but that's not an option when you choose one. So that can encompass a whole lot of things, uh that just doesn't fit like the the dropdowns. Correct. Anyone else? All right, I will pass it off to Adam, and then I will say Bernie is gonna do the handbook for me, cause I gotta step out, so have a nice evening, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, well, thank you for having me tonight. Um, I apologize about my dress, I was supervised in the double hundred baseball games over there. It was very hot and I was very sweaty, so.
May have gotten some sun.
Yes, yeah, I I was at state softball for my daughter this weekend, so I was outside and watching all weekend too.
The sun then.
Uh, well, I I do a very similar format as what Mr. Wickin does, so uh I'll kinda just give a rundown report instead of digging through every single document. Um, so again, at the high school this year, uh the most accurate number for attendance, or first overall students that I've gotten uh was we were at about seventeen eighty two uh this year. Um, our referrals actually went way down this year, uh which was a a big positive for us. I have a lot of thoughts on why that happened. Uh, but a total of three thousand three hundred seventy six referrals, uh encompassing all categories were processed. Uh, that is six hundred and twenty seven fewer referrals from last year, uh which is a little over a fifteen point seven percent decrease. Um, what we do, a lot of times, we see, Mr. Jones and I working through freshmen through seniors, we see a lot of the same kids a lot, uh which is probably not a overly big surprise. Uh, but we kinda dig in and say, hey, where did a lot of these referrals come from? Uh, this year, uh we look, for whatever reason, we've kinda tagged the number at thirty and said, how many students are getting thirty ref- thirty referrals or more? Uh, that went up from last year. Uh, last year, we had twenty one students that fit that category. Uh, this year, we did, we went up five of the twenty six, so we saw that little bit of an increase in enrollment, having that big, big senior class, but also having that freshman class come in, um but it just went up those five students. Um, kind of some interesting um rates about that. Those twenty six students only represent one percent of our student population, but they make up thirty two percent of our total referrals. Um, out of that, you're gonna see it, it's mainly attendance. Uh, our attendance referrals by a long shot are the highest category that we write referrals on. We're having some discussions on how we're going to treat and write referrals for students that are not in the building versus students that are in the building but may choose to skip a class or two. Uh, that's a discussion we're having. Uh, but seventy three percent of those students referrals were attendance based. Uh, so seven hundred and ninety out of one hundred, one thousand seventy nine referrals were for attendance based, so students who are not being called into school, choosing not to come to school, uh or really coming in late or leaving early. Um, with that being said, our average daily attendance, uh as we were, well, I think we were all hoping through the new state law that our attendance rate would probably go up a little bit. Uh, we actually at the high school level saw a little bit of a decrease. Uh, we went down point one six percent. Uh, if you look by grade level, our junior, our junior, senior grade levels are always a little bit lower than the fresh soft because they kinda have that choice and freedom and driving and and on their own or work, uh which is pretty typical. But uh junior level class uh was the lowest. Um, I don't know if you have it in front of you or not, but we did a ru- a breakdown, knowing that that attendance rate dropped and looking at some of the procedures that we had in place with the new state law. Uh, and we looked at the data for students that had missed nine days of school this year, thirteen days, and then eighteen days, which kinda fall under those sending a formalized letter, to holding a school engagement meeting, and then also hitting eventual truancy. Uh, we looked at it over the last four years. Uh, interestingly enough, the students that missed nine days this year, uh between first and se- second semester, actually went up uh from the previous years. Uh, but then the students who missed a ton of days, meaning that thirteen and eighteen, that law seemed to really catch those students. Uh, so we're able to get to some and and really work on those school engagement meetings and send the certified letters and be able to keep students from missing that mass amount of days. But I would say kind of a takeout of it, and this is just knowing the day to day. Parents were just much better at calling their students out this year, uh and then also just linking it to, which is why I say the overall referrals went down. Uh, we ended up seeing a twenty eight point five percent decrease on attendance referrals. Um, but at the same time, again, we were able to catch those those big major players to a certain degree. Um, the top areas, uh just like Mr. Wickin did, I broke it into six categories. Uh, as I said, a- as always, skipping class, um skipping eighth period, skipping study hall, uh that has always been our our major, major category. Uh, but we did see a twenty eight point five percent decrease. Uh, tardies, we, you're gonna see that number and might think, whoa, what the heck? Uh, we had a major, major increase when we, uh in terms of us writing up tardies. Uh, I'll get to that here in a minute. Um, but then anything from parking, we saw a decrease, uh disrupted behavior, we saw a slight increase. Uh, rules violations, I know, Mal, you asked about what that encompasses, that's checking in and out of school, having parents call in, checking out of the nurse's office, attending eighth period, going to study hall. A lot of those all follow under our our rules violation. Uh, and then lastly, inappropriate use of technology with the new law coming. Uh, this year, we actually saw fifty eight percent decrease due to our attendance policy very much fitting already with the new state laws coming in. We've just made a few changes. Um, I talked a little bit about uh the skipping class piece and attendance. Uh, one of the things that the high school team did is we incorporated weekly meetings with our classified staff up front, uh with our two secretaries that do um a- attendance. Uh, as part of that, we looked at it and tried to track down medical documentation, uh make phone calls as students were getting ready to hit that nine day mark. Uh, is there, are there exemptions for these students, are there not? Uh, and really tried to be proactive every week, um and start reaching out to parents on that Friday. Uh, that way we were able to kinda clean up some of that, uh and then also pushing those parents on, hey, why is your student missing school? We're already hitting this number, uh and start getting things turned back in the oppo- the opposite direction. Uh, on the tardy end, one of the things that we did, uh we worked with our classified staff and said, hey, I, we needed to start writing up tardies. Um, first period is still by far the period that students are tardy to the most. Uh, I think the construction, I think um just in general, first period for high school students can be problematic, uh but that continues to be the case. Um, from a, going into suspensions, uh we actually saw a decrease in suspensions this year also. Uh, overall suspension numbers went from one hundred and eighty eight last year, we went down to one hundred and seventy five this year. Uh, typically speaking, um vaping has been a trend within our building over the number, the last number of years. Uh, that is something that we ended up seeing a decrease in this year as well. Um, collectively, vaping incidents went down forty eight percent. Uh, our vape detectors, uh which we installed a couple of years ago, I think have still been very beneficial. Uh, it really has helped stop the number of students that want to congregate in the bathroom for reasons that that should not be happening. Uh, that's continued to help. Uh, they know that they're there. Um, do I think that students may have found ways around what they're doing and potentially accessing uh individual stall bathrooms, things of that nature? I think probably that could be likely. Uh, but again, we are definitely seeing less complaints, less vape detector notices going off, uh and hence that has went. But again, we are definitely seeing less complaints, less vape detector notices going off, and hence that has went down. We've been able to identify students earlier and keep using our security cameras to be able to help identify those students. Deputy Fa, now Deputy Wilson, Deputy Wilson coming up this year, they're always helpful. And this is firm oil. Our juvenile court liaison is part of that also. As I said, suspensions decreased by thirteen resolutions, seven percent decrease. We definitely felt like in general, student-to-student relationships have been getting better, and then also teacher-to-student relationships as well. That was definitely supported by our conditions and learning survey this year, in which we saw an increase in percentages upon every category. Very quickly, parking's huge, and I think you got, all of you may get a lot of calls on parking. I know Mr. Struse does. As I told you, parking violations did dip. Just transparently, we all talked collectively at the beginning of the year and said, hey, we're gonna back off this a little bit this year. And just knowing that due to the construction, limited parking, us going after students all the time on parking violations, there were plenty. But we made a conscious choice to kind of step back on that, still communicate. But really, we were just writing parking tickets for kids that were creating their own spot, blocking somebody in, parking in teacher spots, kind of the big ones, and not just anything behind the line or in front of the line. Lastly, I know this is something that's always on mine. Earlier, Mr. Struse brought up bullying and harassment. We did have four online reports that were submitted for bullying and harassment this year. While these reports only led to one founded case of bullying, our administration also actively worked with our students to address potential cases that we noticed throughout the building or the students brought to us. I do feel like our students do a good job of knowing, hey, we can go to a teacher or we can go to a principal and communicate our concerns. We ended up having five total founded cases of bullying and harassment. While some of these cases do not meet the state definition of bullying and harassment that we would log, we still do work with the students and parents to, that are affected, and then we create a plan for that student so they can feel more comfortable in the building. That being said, I will open up for questions.
So Adam, going back to the question that Dr. Wogley asked with our harassment. If the checkbox is not there for whether it's sex or race or whatever the reason is, would you still, in the narrative state, why the student was saying what the harassment was? And it could be any one of those reasons.
Yes. We are, number one, we always write a referral for the bullying and harassment. So in the narrative of the referral, it's always gonna give specifics of what that student did. Then from there on, any kind of reporting, again, we have to check certain boxes. I'd say for us, we definitely, it's easy to go back, just like with this report. We're able to go back, identify what bullying and harassment cases did we have, and then go back and see the specifics of what each student was doing.
Both in the junior high and in the high school, inappropriate use of technology has had a significant decrease. And I know that was a thing that was brought, a lot of parents had talked to me about about a year ago. And I know that there was a big push to be more consistent in the enforcement of that. Even if that's what has really caused this decrease?
I do, I think it's two things. I want to give a lot of credit to the junior high, because I think just as anything else, our, when freshmen come in, they test the waters a lot. And I think the freshmen have been, have had a pretty consistent model over the last year or two at the junior high. And I think that that helps us, because if the freshmen are in line a little bit more to start the year, it makes it easier for our teachers to be able to enforce what they're doing where they know those expectations. At the same time, I think, well, I can't say that our staff is perfect. We definitely still have some inconsistencies, but I think Mr. Holly, when he came in, that was a point of emphasis that teachers wanted. And it was things that we were hearing about also. So I can't say that every, for example, the new law coming in, you know, we have the parking lots that we're going to have to enforce more. But the message that students, that phones should be put away and out of sight was definitely more consistent. And then the teacher follow-through on communicating with us as administration, accessing the main office, and then us communicating with parents, I definitely think that that helped that number tremendously.
Another thing I noticed also, it's, there seems to be a trend, a good trend, in the, let me just see here. In the, that you guys have, you have the tobacco total, where it seems that in general, when you look back from the data from two thousand and nine to twenty twenty-five, in general, what I'm happy to see is a trend is that the number from ninth grade to twelfth grade actually goes down in general. In other words, that as people are moving, the students are moving through high school, there's less use of tobacco. They might come in and maybe want to try it out in ninth grade, but throughout their four years, it seems like there's a little bit less use of that or violations of that, which hopefully means that people are realizing this is not a good thing and you're having less violations of that. But that is a good trend, I think. So I don't know what it is that you guys are doing with regards to maybe encouraging that tobacco isn't good, but from a healthcare perspective, I think it's the good trend to continue to see.
I do. I think Deputy Fa, in his time at the high school, has been, the benefits that he has going into health classrooms, the way that he communicated with students and communicated with parents, the impact that he had on those students, just it started early and continued. And then again, I think from the high school standpoint, it's, I like to hope, just like you, Dr. Wogley, that they tried it and learned. And I also think that in general, students, as they get older, they start maturing in general. I think discipline data as a whole, Mr. Jones deals with freshmen and sophomores. I was like, he has more events with less significance. And then by the time they get junior, senior level, they have less incidents, but maybe sometimes they're a little bit more serious. And that's been the case at every building that I've ever worked at administratively. So it's, it's nice to be able to work with the juniors and seniors and just see, hey, maybe we're not testing the waters much, and they get to learn a lot about themselves, and they get a driver's license, they find a job, and then they start making connections with what's important to them. And I think that these other things kind of phase out as they go.
Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You're sticking around this long. All right, I will take a motion on the attendance.
I would favor the Pleasant Valley Junior High School and Pleasant Valley High School attendance and discipline reports as presented.
Second.
By Director Conkle, second by Director Ayers, that the board approved Pleasant Valley Junior High and Pleasant Valley Junior High and Pleasant Valley High School attendance and discipline reports as presented. I'll call that, please.
Mrs. Smith. Dr. Wogley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
Mr. Talmisher?
Yes.
Mr. Bearden?
Yes.
And Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Sorry about that. Thank you.
All right, moving along to the student handbook updates.
Go first, Steph. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. You've been waiting.
You might have to sign in because a few are directed to AI and things.
Okay, yep, I can definitely take those.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. I appreciate all of, all that you do. Appreciate each of you. We don't have any large changes for the elementary handbook tonight, but our first one is just on the school counseling service page, just some grammatical changes. So if you could take a look, I just highlighted in blue what the language was and in blue on the proposed line what it is proposed to be changed to. The next one is about wellness programming. So just to align to Iowa Code Chapter Twelve Division Five Rule Two Eighty-One, and also with the adoption of our Character Strong curriculum. Vivian, students and I, and Tony Hyatt believes that this language encompassed more of the curriculum that we currently engage in. So you see the only changes are from those four items and then listing those two items. For the threats of violence, we just wanted to align it to the new board policy five oh two point one. So we just pulled that language directly over and deleted what our old handbook language was. For the district Chromebook Use Policy, there is some language in our handbook about seven twelve, and we just felt like that wasn't related to K six, so we are advocating that we take that out. So we're removing the devices over summer. Since our students don't take their devices home over the summer, we keep them in the building, and the tech department just updates them in the building. Our students also don't take home the devices at night unless directed by their teachers. So we also took out the language about having to charge it at night and that parent responsibility piece there. So pretty straightforward. And then Bernie was a part of the AI committee, so we just decided as a K six, K twelve system to be consistent with language there.
Yeah, so last board meeting we presented on our AI committee work, and part of that was reviewing our current policies to see if the way that they were written was broad enough that it could encompass AI. And we are suggesting at the all levels, a few changes when it comes to, oh geez, what portion of this? It's, oh, it's about academic integrity. So you'll see on the junior high and high school that it's actually the bullet point where, under the change column, it's the last bullet point in that list that is really the new part. That using artificial intelligence to complete all or part of an assignment without teacher permission, failing to disclose its use or otherwise misrepresenting AI-generated content would be a violation of our academic integrity policy. So that was added in to make sure we can encompass that. We did find through our committee's work that at the elementary level, we didn't have an elementary academic integrity policy. And so what Mr. Hyatt did is he adapted the elementary version that you see in the handbook this evening from what we had at the junior high, just to ensure that it was developmentally appropriate for that level.
All right, and then the last one was about, I know there's new, a new bill that was passed around, cellphone usage in the building. So we've been advised to wait to see what the guidance is at the state level about that. And then we'll have a committee internally decide what that looks like at the elementary level. But right now, students just keep their cellphones in their book bags and in their lockers. So I only had, I was between two buildings this year, and I only had to remind two students between both buildings for the entire school year once. So it's not a big issue at the elementary, but we do want to wait for guidance from the district and the state on that, so. So no big changes, but you have any questions about those proposals?
I was gonna say that on the devices over the summer, you have to change the email to Mr. Price.
That's right. Thank you.
I, just out of curiosity, talking about cellphone devices, what are you seeing as far as, I know, you know, my kids are past that age, and I know what it was like when they were in grade school, but how much more cellphone use are we seeing in that elementary? Like, would you say that kids are getting cellphones at grade five now? Or what, what is, I guess, your perspective on that?
I probably speak as a parent on this one instead of as an administrator, because I don't see it hap, I don't see lots of kids bringing them into the school unless it's putting it in the book bag on the way from the bus. But from a parent's perspective, my oldest is going into sixth grade, and the peer pressure is there to get a phone. So I think many do in the fourth through sixth grade type of timeframe.
I felt like I waited, you know, I was able to wait till seventh grade, but I wondered how soon it would creep down.
Seems like it had.
I was stationed with Mr. Pennekamp this past school year. He actually talked about how he's has seen recent data that shows that parents are waiting longer to get their kids' cellphones, which is an exciting trend as a mom of a fourth grader.
We're waiting a while.
Yeah, your parent perspective is probably more spot on than anything right now.
Yep, we'll see where the trend takes us.
Stay firm.
Yep, yep.
All right, any questions for Mrs. Thayer?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, I can jump in with the handbook proposed, or the junior high proposed handbook changes. I did cover the first one already. That was the academic integrity change to encompass AI. So moving on to the second page. So at the junior high and high school, we've talked a little bit about cellphones this evening. We did want to make sure that our procedures are aligning with what the new state law is telling us. I know Leanne and Brian are working on the district policy that needs to be adopted, and we're using the basis, I believe, of IASB for that. But the junior high and high school administrators did go through the new legislation and cross-referenced it as they were creating what you see as the changes in the handbooks this evening. So I'm actually, I'll probably present those side by side, first the junior high and then the high school, so that we can talk about them at the same time, if that's okay. So at the junior high, they are changing it from in their backpacks at all time to students are going to be required to keep the cellphones in their lockers at all times. So that, in doing that, we ensure that we are meeting the legislation. But that was a change that Mr. Pekin thought would be good for the junior high to try out. We did talk through maybe some unintended consequences of that, that we might actually see some referrals with cellphones go up initially as students get used to the new rule. But just completely away, out of sight. The benefit of doing that as well is that typically other devices work off of your cellphone, right? They're Bluetooth technology, so unless you're in close proximity to your locker, your smartwatches wouldn't work either. So.
Doesn't the bill also include all devices? If you're just cellphones?
So it does address all devices. What it says about, you know, the smartwatches, the earbuds, those things, is that they may not be used, but it doesn't specifically say that it can't be on a student. So just in terms of being able to enforce those things, we really felt that the cellphones in the lockers was a good first step.
I think the bill says that they can be in transmission mode.
Yeah. Yeah.
I think our power discussion was, so many students have, whether it's iPhone watch, or they may have an Apple watch, or an Android Garmin watch. You're never gonna know for sure what they're doing, but if you see them doing something, then you address it at that point. But if they're just sitting there, it's gonna be hard to enforce that.
The law also outlined communication procedures in the event of an emergency, which we included in the handbook language as well, the updated handbook language. Mr. Holly, do you want to talk a little bit about the changes at the high school that you want to do specific to this one?
Our big change is that this year, which was really successful, we asked that students kept it in their, in the backpacks. We don't do lockers because most of our kids don't use the locker. Where this year, we are actually trying to take care of those areas where it wasn't happening as much as you already had them talk about. Is that every teacher now will have a spot where all phones will go, and that's where they will be during instructional time. So we defined instructional time and expect all teachers to then have all students put it there. We know students will have two phones. I walk around with two phones every day. We know that, we've asked that no teacher allow kids to have their headphones in. That's another big one. That's a harder one. She could have headphones in and you would never know.
Look how cute you two looks in there. Their PB blue.
We're not even worried about watches. If she's active here, we believe that watches, we believe we can catch that.
I've talked to some high school teachers, and they actually told me that watches are more annoying than the cellphones. So, and it's almost more distracting. So in, if, and since this, in the high school, they're gonna be they're gonna be keeping the cellphones in the room. There will be connection then because they're in close proximity. Am I correct?
Yeah, but most of our kids are on the wifi, so it won't matter anyway because your watch will
Oh, and their phone.
I leave my phone in my office all the time, and my watch goes off everywhere in the building.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm on the wifi.
Then that would be considered a violation?
Yes.
Yeah, because part of the language within the policy requires them to turn off notifications. So that's where the disruption can be limited, is it's not constantly going off while during the instructional time. And those are the things that Brian and I are looking at with the help of, of course, everybody else to make sure that enforcement of the policy is not overreaching and unrealistic for, for teachers to be able to enforce. We have to be kind of careful in that line of, if the policy says we're gonna do it, but we can't enforce it, what would we just do to teachers, right? So just So just finding that really thin line of making sure that it gets what our administrators need, but also has the.
And making it consistent amongst the teachers.
And that's kind of, that was the why we made the one big change. But I will tell you anecdotally, the kids complain every day in the lunchroom, like, can't we use our phones more? I mean, it has been, it has been, I will say, well received, even though that's not what students mean by it. But every time they say it, I said, you do realize I feel very good when you say it. So it has been, it has been, and our numbers showed it, you know? And I, and I think we had, we would get feedbacks, subs, for example, would comment that they thought that coming in, they were amazed that phones were put away to a much higher level. We started, as the year went through, we started to see more earbuds. I'm curious when we'll find our first, you know, Meta glasses or something like that. That will show up. So those kinds of things are coming.
Also in the law are the cases for exemptions or appeals. And so we made sure that that language was also going to be reflected in the handbook. So an example of an exemption would be if a student needs it to monitor a health-related device. They might have like a health-related 504 plan that would require them to carry their cellphones. But our expectations for the disruption of the device would remain the same even if a student falls within that exemption. You might see a little line in the junior high that references the attendance policy. Heather is going to be taking out the part of our attendance policy that references the certified letter. With the legislation, they updated the attendance laws and they removed the requirement for districts to send the certified letter. So that's all that that is referring to. The next little bit in both the junior high and the high school refers to students who are opting for online instruction. In our district, we do use edgenuity for those purposes. What we found, it's been an uptick with the trend, is that we have more and more students who might opt to take a class or a few classes or completely switch to the online modality mid semester or in the middle of the year. And we really didn't have anything in place that prevented them from doing that. So we needed to really shore up our language so that we were a little bit clearer about when a student could opt for that and under which circumstances. So the addition for both the junior high and high school, it's a little bit different just based on the way we handle it at both levels. But it's just to promote transparency and clearly communicate expectations for students who choose to engage in that online instruction. And it aligns with consistency between levels too. You'll see that with the junior high and the high school documents. And then moving on at the high school, so that, that kind of shores up the junior high handbook changes aside from just the staff updates, we're going to be removing Dr. Hicks's name and adding Ms. Verhecki's name, just some little things like that. With the high school though, you'll also see that there is some language included this evening about concurrent enrollment and what that registration process looks like and when a student can change modalities. So if you look at this section, it's actually, there are several pages actually that.
Page six of eleven.
Thank you. Speaking of trends, we also saw a trend of students who, I'm going to use public speaking as an example. So public speaking is a concurrent enrollment course that students can take in high school. We see, it's our, it's our most popular concurrent enrollment course. We see a lot of students sign up for it. We started seeing a trend that right before school started, students had signed up for the face-to-face version in our building. So it was built into the schedule. Our own staff was teaching it. It's something that we counted on when we were creating the master schedule. What we started noticing is that students were dropping that after staffing was completely set and opting for the online version. Motivation for that could vary from, I don't want to wake up for a first period public speaking class or I don't want to stay for seventh period public speaking. I want my day to end after sixth period. Or it could range for a variety of reasons. Like, I need more flexibility in my day because I'm so busy with Spartan Assembly and after-school activities. So the motivation, really, it did vary. But there are some financial implications for the district when that happens. So I mentioned that our staffing is set, right? We, we schedule according to student need and when the students' preferences change like that, there was nothing preventing them from doing that. Actually, in senior year plus legislation, it requires us to allow that flexibility of students. But we could do more to kind of shore up when they can switch modalities, which is what this handbook change really lays out. So it's actually underlined there that the deadline for adding or changing modalities for Scott Community College classes is one week prior to the start of the SEC course or PBHS's start date each semester, whatever comes first. So the other financial implication or the, the thing that was difficult for our district when students were doing that is the online classes cost the district so much more money. And again, senior year plus legislation outlines the district's responsibility to pay for the course regardless of modality. So it, it was surprising us in a couple ways with staffing and sections and the master schedule, but also in our invoice from EICC the past several semesters. So that's a big reason why we, we added that in. It still provides students the opportunity to do that, but they need to be a little bit more planful with their intention to do so.
I think this falls in line nicely when students would take different courses or get to drop it or they drop it too late and then we're still paying for courses. So it just creates a timeline saying, here's your deadline when you have to make a choice. So let's just not do whatever you want to do it.
But then if they do drop it, do we get the money back?
No, not after a certain point.
No. If they drop it, can we then bill the family?
No, against senior year plus legislation. Here's, here's the crazy part. We have had students drop the in-person version and then pick up the online version and they drop the in-person version after the drop date. So we get charged for both courses for the same student. So that is the reason, that's part of the reason why we are putting that language in.
Do we not get pro-rated from them the same way another student was enrolled in the class? Where if you do it before this date, it's twenty-five percent reimbursed, fifty?
We do, but I'm talking about when the student drops after the pro-rated date. Yeah. Yep, so it was needed. We're excited that it's in there.
From the state for this?
What was that?
Do we get any money from the state for this?
We do get some supplemental waiting, but the cost of concurrent enrollment for the district has been higher than what we receive in supplemental waiting, so we've had to make up the difference. And so we're hoping that this change will help kind of equal some of that out.
And that's a bigger conversation between EICC and possibly all the districts and what they charge and what we receive for supplemental waiting. It's been a three-year ongoing conversation with them. And their new president coming in would be, we'll continue that conversation with them. The chancellor, actually, I should say.
How far into the class are they getting before they're making this? Like, are we halfway through the course or?
It varies. It does, it varies quite a bit. And you know, part of it, we still want some flexibility for students to be able to drop classes. If they are in over their head, they're trying a college class for the first time. You know, it's part of the learning experience of engaging in concurrent enrollment classes in high school. And we don't want an F on a student's transcripts to follow them. So in some ways, like, I would advocate that we still allow them to drop. It's appropriate in a lot, most circumstances. But yeah, we got into some really tricky head-scratching situations where we were calling the DE about, do we actually have to pay for both? And that was one that she spent some time researching and got back to us and she said, unfortunately, you do. Mr. Holly, did I miss anything?
Yep. Right under your underline. Will be required.
Oh, thank you.
Why can't?
So yes, you might notice there, new also is that students are going to be required to be in a scheduled study hall during their day to work on their course. So if they're opting for an online course, we're also scheduling a study hall for them for a little bit of an accountability measure to make sure students have the time and the support necessary to progress well in courses.
And do they have to do that course and that study hall? Or they can do whatever they want?
So. That is interesting. So we will say that until we get information that they are not doing well on that course, we're not continuing what they need to complete because we can watch their edgenuity that they are able to act as they, we are a closed campus and we need our students in the building.
Is that an SEC online course or is it edgenuity? I think it might be SEC. That, that's the way, I know I'm putting you on the spot. I apologize. It's just the way I'm reading it.
I thought it was for the SEC class.
Yeah.
You are right. It is for this.
So you, well, you have a way of monitoring them?
We're still able to monitor them. We're still able to. Yeah, every quarter, the teacher has to submit a grade. So then at that point, they will move into a more refined, more restricted study hall. And they only take one. They may take three online classes, but they only have one study. And it's just a, to her point about, well, I want to take it online so I can leave. You will have a study hall in your, in your day.
So senior year plus really restricts the type of things that we can put in place. The handbook language and the study hall is one thing that we do have local control over. So we're gonna try to exercise what we can do.
That's a great idea. It's really good.
Yeah, it's a lot of money.
For accountability.
Yes.
And I would say we are one of the few schools who still offer edgenuity options for kids. And that was very common after the pandemic. Most districts have dropped that as an option. We still have maintained it, but we'll monitor that to see if it's paying dividends, what we expect. Because sometimes students are taking that course and they're doing nothing. And all of a sudden, at the end of the quarter, they want to try to get that course done as quickly as possible and they're not completing it. And then all of a sudden, now they're failing a course, so.
We have to keep watching that as well.
Is that where this reference to parents not have access to grades comes in?
What was that? Sorry, I didn't hear you.
There's a reference in here to parents not have access to grades and I wanted to ask you about that.
Have access to college grades because students are not considered. So they, so that's why we require that even, no matter what, there has to be an entered, a grade entered at the quarter. We get something, but as a rule, much like when, for those of you that have taken your job from college, they'll look you right there and says, this is the end of your conversation. You go over there and we're gonna talk to kids.
Yeah, but that's because they're eighteen.
It, it's still a college course. They don't, we do not have access. So we require that they put in a quarter grade.
The EICC faculty has to put in the quarter grade for us.
Edgenuity is different. Edgenuity is still a high school course that we are doing. So our counselors monitor that.
I believe, yes to that. And I also believe parents do have access through a parent portal with edgenuity that they can monitor if they want to.
It's a high school course.
Yeah.
If they're not eighteen, if that doesn't do with their eighteen or not, it's just what their policy is.
With the college course.
So with your conversation with the chancellor, maybe you can talk about that.
Good luck with that one. We've had that conversation. They're just like, no.
Even though we're paying for it.
Yeah.
Just like.
It's just like a, thank you for college.
Yeah. Anything else, any other comments?
I know everyone's left, but I just want to say thank you to all of them for what they do throughout the course of the year. I really want to commend our teams at all levels with the chronic fashionism this year. We met at least quarterly for sure, Steph, or every other, every month. It was a lot.
Once a month.
Once a month, we met and really were breaking down, what are we seeing? How's the change? What's the law enforcing? How are we enforcing X, Y, or Z? And it was just really great conversations and it made a difference for kids who were getting towards that long number of days of absence, so we were pleased with that.
Are you expecting to get any, at the, at the beginning of the school year, are you expecting to get any pushback on, on parents on the cellphone, the new cellphone?
I don't expect any real pushback from the cellphone. I, I, we, we've been close to that. So, I mean, there will be an initial, we're not doing it, but it will be, as it was told me almost the first day I came here, our kids are rule followers. As long as our teachers are consistent, they will.
And I think, and we need to model it as adults too. You know, teachers need to model their classroom and administrators model as much as we can too.
The teachers haven't given any, like, concerning feedback regarding the parking lots and their ability to use that in the classroom.
No, many of our teachers did it last year. And I mean, that's not a new thing and some of the teachers just like it better, so they were, we gave them, if you want to have them do that, go ahead. And lots of them did. I wouldn't say lots. Several of them did and had no issues. To my astonishment, I mean, no, not even messing with them. One teacher had it set up where you could charge your phone. I mean, no, I don't anticipate any issues with that.
From an administrative standpoint too, in terms of ensuring that staff are following consistently, it will be nice to have the visual of the parking lot. You know, you can walk into a room and if the phones are in the parking lot, we're good in here.
The other advantage is that then they are not to take them out with them when they go with the pass to a teacher, to the restroom, whatever, which are things we really want to have happen, is not take those in the restroom.
It'll be interesting to see what happens in the state with regards to the fact that this is being implemented through public schools, but private schools do not have the cellphone. This does not apply to, it does not apply to private schools. See if there's any trend for kids or students or families to move their kids to your parents because of this.
My friends in the private school, they must get their cellphones.
Well, thank you for being here and stuff like that. Mike, we really appreciate all your work. I know, you know, some of these, this, this takes a lot of digging into the details on your part, but it's all for the betterment of students, even if they don't see it that way. So we really appreciate all your work on this. Did anyone else have any comments or questions?
I have a comment. I know we talked about the AI thing and here, just, I want to just look at a study that MIT just came out with.
I saw that, the study with the essay writing.
Yes.
Yes, I did. I, I saw that.
It shows, it just, the small study has not been peer reviewed yet. Like, they did EEG studies and they looked at different age groups. And they found basically that those who used GPT and LLMs.
Large language models.
It kind of dubs down your, your brain.
If you don't use it, you lose it.
And, and so I, I hope that as we are coming up with our AI policies, that we're following all of these studies to ensure that we're not doing that. Keep that in mind. Sorry. We're good.
All right, I'll take a motion.
I move the board accept the updates to the elementary, junior high, and high school student parent handbook as presented.
Motion by Director Smith, second by Director Wogley. Director Board, accept the updates to the elementary, junior high, and high school student parent handbooks as presented.
Mrs. Wheeler. Director Wogley.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Pelicle.
Yes.
Mrs. Canwisher.
Yes.
Mr. Ayers.
Yes.
And Mrs. Breckley.
Yes.
And lastly, the resolution for purchase of athletic protective equipment.
This is very simple. Every year we make this transition, this transaction. Thirty-three thousand dollars that you see listed there, that's money that we've spent in our activities account typically. And actually, I actually know what it's for. It's for like helmets for football, shoulder pads. And then thirty thousand dollars of that was for our batting cages at the high school. They're metal batting cages, so when the ball hits it, it ricochets off and hits the kids. So we put nets in there to make it safe. So thirty, that thirty-three thousand dollars will now be transferred from activities over to general funds. So Deanne basically gets thirty-three thousand dollars back. So, simple, every year we make this transition if it's safety equipment, we can make that change.
Usually it's Mike who's coming.
Yes, Mike is, yes, Mike would normally be doing this, but I, I could stand in and take care of this one for him.
Sounds good. Any questions?
I move the board to approve the transfer of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one, two hundred and fifty-nine cents from the general fund to the student activity fund for the purchase of athletic protective equipment during the 2024, 2025 school year, specified in 2017 HF House File 564.
Second.
Motion by Director Wogley, second by Director Canwisher. The board approved the transfer of thirty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-nine cents from the general fund to the student activity fund for the purchase of athletic protective equipment during the 2024, 2025 school year as specified in the 2017 House File 564. Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Wheeler.
Mrs. Wheeler. Director Wogly.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Puncle.
Yes.
Mr. Canwisher.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, future dates, we have one board meeting in July, that's July fifteenth starting at six PM. And then our first August board meeting is August eleventh at sixteen. Karen, thank you.
Oh, it's Karen, Streus for staying eight thirty.
I know.
Say that, she's got some, she's got some data on that.
She she just always adds a half hour to whatever I say.
Spot on.